Chapter 231, PL 1975. The adequate notice of this regular meeting, as required by the Open Public Meetings Act, was provided by the posting, mailing delivery and filing of this notice on October 20, 2020. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Korean News, the Echo Central and tapped into Warren and filed with the township clerk of the township before, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please all rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's reach into to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Ambercar.
Yes.
Mr. Bellish.
Here.
Mr. Bishi.
Here.
Mr. Brizzi.
Here.
Mrs. DiMaggio. Mr. Franco.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Zahn.
Here.
And Mr. Bellman.
Here.
We have a quorum and may proceed.
Resolved that the Board of Education approves the public session minutes of the October 19, 2020 board meeting.
Second, Bellman.
Ms. Ambercar.
Yes.
Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Brizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio, are you on the line? Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Correspondence and information, Dr. Mingle.
Thank you. Nothing to report in the HIV or suspension report. The board received one letter from the Warren Youth Basketball Association regarding indoor facilities.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. President's remarks. Good evening and welcome to our Monday, November 2nd, 2020 meeting of the Warren School Board. Today, I will be briefing my remarks. This week is a short week for our students with three school days, one of which, namely tomorrow, is fully virtual for all students, as per Governor Murphy's order, which requires all schools in New Jersey be virtual on Election Day. I encourage you all to use your voices and vote and discuss this great responsibility and opportunity with your children. All schools will be closed this Thursday and Friday, providing our teachers the opportunity to participate in the NJEA Teacher Convention. With this, I thank you all for joining us this evening and look forward to a productive meeting. With that, I'm handing over to Dr. Mingle for the superintendent remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman, and my remarks are very brief tonight as well. As you already shared our information about the week's schedule, I would remind parents and staff members who are on the call that our October Stakeholder Perception Survey is live until tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM. The link is in last Thursday's community briefing and last Thursday's staff email. So we hope that everybody will take a chance to participate in the survey as it'll help us make decisions moving forward as well. And just the message I keep sending home each week is we're all working together to make sure we can keep the doors open. I want to thank the parents and students and our staff members. People are making significant sacrifices in their personal lives in order to make that happen, including postponing or canceling travel, making alternative plans for things like Thanksgiving and the holidays. And it's things for all of us. We all wish that we could move past all those things and just be fully open and not dealing with that. But we know that those decisions are what's helping us keep everybody safe in school. So I thank you for your help and cooperation with that. Turn it back to you, Mr. Bellman.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle, for your remarks. Presentation. Today, there is no presentation. And thus, there is no discussion or does any board member want to discuss any of the items so far? Seeing none, moving on to the committee reports. Any of the chairs. Mr. Brizzi, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. The Finance Operations and Security Committee met on Monday, October 26, virtually. A quicker meeting for us, I will say. Agenda items and discussion items included a quick follow-up on the traffic beacons that we've spoke of previously. Essentially, our part is done. We are waiting assistance from the county level on these due to the county roads these are on. The middle school paving project, an update on the possible timeline for that. And while we were on that, we also discussed seeing if we could explore different options that would help potentially with traffic flow and safety in that location. Central school security vestibule and central school slate roof gave updates on those projects. And of course, we talked about the 2021, 2022 budget and some very high-level items with that, including the timeline. There are for the board members, if you see that updated budget, projected budget, there is an addition of two elementary staff school members. We are seeing we're seeing the students come back, which is a very good thing. And I, with the development in the town, I suspect it's going to continue to go up for me personally. And we further explored referendum options and scope for additional capital improvement projects that are down the line in the coming years and how we could potentially pay for those and what that meant in terms of what's left in the budget, et cetera. And our next meeting is November 23rd at 6:30 PM. Thank you, Mr. Bellman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brizzi. Any other commentary reports? Dr. Mingle, please go ahead.
The Ad-Hoc Return to School Committee met last Wednesday, discussed several items, including a request from the WTEA, talking also about hybrid 1.2 planning or what might come next. That led to the inclusion of some additional questions in the perception survey I mentioned earlier. So again, we hope everybody will fill out that survey and share their thoughts. More to come at the next meeting about that planning. We reviewed a request for indoor facility usage with the committee, which will be on the agenda and new business tonight as well. And then we had several smaller updates, including the CDC changed their definition of a close contact. We talked about the cases that we've dealt with, the updated cohort rotation calendar, which will be in this week's community update, and the impact of holiday travel for both students and staff members.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. And with that, I think we're done with the committee reports. Any other commentary reports? Seeing none, moving over to the public commentary. We ask you to be brief and respectful with your comments and appreciate that among many voices, there will be areas of agreement and disagreement among reasonable people. I remind you that board policy allows for public commentary for three minutes per participant and for 15 minutes in the time book. At such time, the board must then authorize an additional increment of 15 minutes, as per our policy. All speakers have to provide their name and address and to turn on their camera. In the first section of public comment, we are limited to comments on items on the agenda. Please use the raise your hand feature inside Zoom. You will find that on the bottom of your Zoom conference. If you click on Participants, this opens an extra box and there you have a blue symbol, Raise Your Hand. I'll call the members in order who that raised their hand. I see none, but we will have another section at the end where we allow feedback for all topics. I'll give it another. Mrs. Jockey, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Jaclyn Jokey from Nine Heritage Drive. And basically, I just had a question regarding the most recent survey that went out. And I found it confusing similarly to some of the previous surveys that went out when they were asking about the CDC recommendations or some of the recommendations and whether you agree or disagree with them. And in answering those questions, I don't really understand what the implications of your response is. And are you agreeing that if you're being asked to do that, you agree with doing it? Are you being asked, do you feel it's necessary? I find them confusing questions. And I'm not sure whether somebody is putting they agree or disagree, whether any decision seems to be able to be made or extrapolated from that data. And if they're going to continue to ask questions such as that, maybe perhaps we could be educated on what that is, how that's being interpreted and what ramifications in planning for the future may be taking place in regards to that. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Jokey. Any other participants? Seeing none. Dr. Mingle, do you want to answer the question?
Yes, thank you. So I'll make sure that when we do the update this week or when the survey results are available for the public update, that I address that concern. But just for the people on the call, those questions are to help give us a sense of how the community feels about certain things because there are a lot of comments in the surveys that say things like you shouldn't follow the guidelines about social distancing or you shouldn't follow the guidelines about how many people can be on a bus. And we want to find out what the general feedback is. I can tell you from the surveys, everyone we've done, the vast majority of respondents say we should be enforcing all the CDC guidelines. But it helps give us a sense of what the larger community is feeling. It doesn't necessarily mean we would stop doing something, but it gives information to the various committees so that they're aware of where the community is. For example, there are school districts that do not make students stay six feet apart during the school day. Although the CDC says we should, as does the New Jersey Department of Health, there are districts that have made a decision not to follow that. And so it's important for us to know what our community thinks. But I'll make sure that we address that in the survey results so everybody sees that information.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. With that, we are coming to agenda item 12. Items for Board Consideration Action. Is there any item that a member of our board wants to pull out either for separate vote or for discussion? I want to pull out D. Mr. Bishi, I saw a motion.
Yeah, I just wanted to discuss C4 as well.
See for discussion and potentially a separate vote or once discussed included?
Potentially separate vote depending on the discussion.
Good. I'll pull it out for a separate vote. Anybody else? In that case, Mrs. Zahn, could you please go ahead with the rest of the item except D and C4?
Motion to approve items for board consideration, Section 12, Items A 1 through 4, B 1 and 2, C 1 through 3, C5, C6.
Second.
Ms. Ambercar. Ambercar.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Brizzi.
Yes.
Is Mrs. DiMaggio on the line? Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Item C4, Discussion. Mr. Bishi.
I just, I got some background on it already, so I appreciate the background. This is, I suppose, it was a full-time position. And could it be a part-time position? And if it was a part-time position, if we moved to full-time, would it require another vote of the board? That is more procedural question. And I didn't know what the range of the costs may be and where that cost, whether we have enough money in the budget for that cost or whether, you know, where it would come from within the budget, kind of along the lines of Mr. Brizzi's comment about needing new teachers in the future. I'm just not sure what the cost, the range of the cost would be and where we've, where it's budgeted, if it's budgeted now and/or if it's not where we would pull the cost from.
So let me start from the, it couldn't go from part-time to full-time without a board action because the board, there wouldn't be a position for us to fill that was full-time. I would say also from, and so the answer is always yes. Part-time could be something that is explored. However, part-time doesn't come with benefits. And these are relatively low-paying entry-level computer technician jobs. So not having benefits would, I predict significantly harm us in the marketplace. I don't feel comfortable getting into salary ranges in this meeting because I think it would put us in a bad spot for negotiating with a candidate. Right. I, what we can definitely follow up with the board in this week's update is the salary range of the last time we hired for this role because that would give us a ballpark of where a position like this would fall. It's not a budgeted position. So when we did the budget a year ago, we didn't budget for an additional computer technician, as I shared and I know the board knows this, but for the benefit of everybody else. The reason we're proposing an additional computer technician position, well, there are several. One is our technology department, they're all amazing, but it has not grown since before the district had one-to-one, even the upper grades. And we now, out of necessity, not only have one-to-one in the grades that we always planned for, but have one-to-one in kindergarten and beyond. And our, even our senior tech systems people who keep the network running and everything else are doing break fixes on Chromebooks and iPads and other things. So we feel it's very important that we have another computer technician.
I should have prefaced my comments with, I had two interactions with our IT folks and they were outstanding. I wish I could get that kind of support elsewhere in my life when it comes to my computer. And I guess if we went part-time, I feel like probably now with work from home and Chromebooks just so critical to every student, now is not the time. Probably if we went part-time and grew into full-time, that would be the reverse of what we actually need. I feel like probably you're, it's probably peak time now that I suppose we need the position. I just could see then, although we are one-to-one, it coming down once we're back to school again and then we have a kind of an, we may not need all that manpower on the IT side. So I don't think I have any other questions. Thank you, Mr. Dr. Mingle.
And I didn't really fully answer the rest of that question. Thank you. So any positions that would remain in the budget for next year require us to put them into the budget, make sure that there's monies for them and have the board's support for that overall budget. So that would have to be reviewed when we went through staffing. But this happens on an annual basis.
Okay.
Thank you. Was that, can we vote on the items, Mr. Bishi?
Yes, yes, sure.
Mrs. Zahn, could you please?
Motion to approve item for board consideration, Section 12, Item C4.
Second.
Mr. Brizzi. Thank you. Ms. Ambercar.
Yes.
Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Brizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. From D1, I want to pull out P1648.02 for a comment slash discussion separate vote. But we can vote on the other items. Mrs. Zahn, could you please?
Motion to approve item for board consideration, Section 12, Item D, all policies except for 1648.02.
Second, Bellman.
Ms. Ambercar.
Yes.
Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Brizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. P1648.02, similar to my comment in the last meeting. I think we should be more flexible and offer all of our families in our district the opportunity to change within 30 days. It should not be dependent on circumstances within one school or within one class. I think it provides more equity if our students have the flexibility. I don't think we as board members should just say, oh, this could impact me negatively. We should be open to ensure that all the families in the district have the same chances. And that's why I am not in agreement with these changes that disadvantage some of our students. Does Mrs. Zahn, please?
I'm sorry, Mr. Bellman. I'm not following completely the disadvantage that you're describing. Could I ask you to explain that a little better, a little more clearly?
Right now, our policy is to ensure that people that want to change between the purely virtual and the in-person or the in-person and purely virtual option can do so within 30 days after they have handed in the request to change. After 30 days, this has to be incorporated as per the current policy. In the future, this is, as far as I understand, extended to half a year or if there is a change in the hybrid model. In that case, it can be done if certain schools, certain classes have an opening, but it is not insured. Was that it is very dependent in what school and what class the student is. And the administration is not flexible in that case to create an opening for a student that wants to change. Mrs. Zahn, please.
I'm sorry, Dr. Mingle, is that what this says? Could I just have some clarification on that?
Sure. So it doesn't, it doesn't say that they have to wait until a new market period necessarily, but it adds the phrase that says resources, based on resource availability, which is, I think, what Mr. Bellman is referring to, that, you know, if we are in a situation, for example, where our kindergarten distance, which is now a dedicated class, is at capacity and somebody asks to move into it, we don't have a teacher to put into that role. So this gives us the ability to say we can accommodate that because we don't have a teacher. The board can choose to make more resources available at that point if it wanted to, but it gives us the ability to say no. Where right now, there's no language, depending on your interpretation of the language, the language doesn't clearly say that we can say no.
Mr. Mrs. Zahn, you're puzzled. I'll ask Mr. Franco for a comment for now.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to remind everyone that this entire thing we're doing is an exercise in resource allocation. Right? Everything we're doing is an exercise in resource allocation right now. And, and I don't think it's an unreasonable request to put in language as students want to transfer from one, one situation to another for there to be allocable resources in order for that to happen. I think that's a very reasonable ask. And it's not an indefinite thing. If someone wants to change, they can change. I think it says during the, you know, semester change or in between. If I have that right, Dr. Mingle, I think it says between the semesters. But I don't think it's unreasonable to cite that as long as the resources are there, then we can do it. If the resources are not available, this whole thing is an exercise in resource allocation. If we had the space and the teachers in the facility to bring everyone back to school, that's what we have done. We would have done that already, but we don't, right? So we have to make the best with the resources we have. And it's, I think, unfair to mandate that we have to reallocate resources if they're just not, if it's not feasible. And, and I don't know if I should take, take it personally, your comment about making decisions based on our personal effect. But it wouldn't just be one family that's affected. If enough people are trying to make a change, it could potentially affect the entirety of a grade or a school. And I don't think that that's fair. So I think the language is fine the way it is.
As I see no other, Mrs. Zahn, please go ahead.
Um, I just want to agree with Mr. Franco. I think that this administration has certainly, I think that we should trust that they would do what they can, they have thus far. And to give them the ability to say that the resources, as they're currently allocated, don't really provide for additional space at this time. I think that we need to give them the ability to do that rather than force a situation where they may have to disrupt many other families to accommodate a single request. So I, I think that the language adequately puts the public on notice of what we need to do to operate as a district. And I trust that the administration, if it's possible to accommodate requests, will do so.
Any other comment? Could you please go ahead with the motion? I'm sorry, Ms. Up. I'm sorry. I seem as out of car.
Yes. So my only point here is that the district is doing a lot for the kids. I agree to that. But the language which has been put in right now seems a little more watertight because it kind of dissuades students from making the change or moving. So all I'm saying is, yes, if resource availability, but that has not been put in there. Depending on the resource availability, we have not used those words. So when I read it, it sounds to me that we can only do it at the beginning of a new phase of the return to school process or at the new year, whatever that works. But only the full-time remote learning can be granted depending on the resources. That's what has been written, but not the other way around. I just feel it has to be a little flexible. That's all it is because this seems a little more watertight to me. And I, of course, believe in whatever our objective is, it's resource dependent, but that is something which should be reflected.
Thank you very much. I see him, Mr. Bellish.
Yeah, can I just ask a point of clarification? So irrespective of resources, at what interval under the policy will changes between hybrid to remote or vice versa be supported?
The language in the post, the new language says the student may only begin full-time remote learning at the beginning of the school year or at the beginning of a new phase of the return to school process. That phrase, at the beginning of a new phase, is vague because every district does something different. We've already made numerous phases. So my interpretation of that would be every time we bring a change to the return to school plan to the board, that would be a new phase. But then it adds on beyond that, request for students to begin full-time learning at any other time may be granted should conditions and resources allow. So that, from my perspective, that's the release valve to say, as long as we have the availability, we'll make the space. As long as, I should refer to that, as long as the space exists, we will make the availability.
Okay. I saw first Mrs. Zahn and then Mrs. Ambercar.
I just want to draw attention to the fact that I do think that there's reciprocal language in two different spots. Item B2 is the language for moving to full-time remote. And item D2 is for a request to move to in-person services. And the languages does appear to mirror each other. So, so there is reciprocity there appears in this, in this policy.
Mrs. Ambercar.
Yeah, my only thing is, I would read that last sentence again, which says, request for students to begin full-time remote learning at any other time may be granted should the conditions and resources allow. So I only felt that it is more of a focus for remote learners who can move easily. And the ones, so that's where I felt it was more watertight. So if you feel that there is flexibility in that clause, then it's great because we do want the students to come back.
Actually, I think she's got a good catch there. Isn't that supposed to be request for students to begin in-person services at any other time in Section D2?
It mentions full-time remote learning at any other time.
Thank you. Yes. So it's in the section that says to in-person, but it says the other way around. Thank you, Mr. Franco and Mrs. Ambercar. So we'll, so indeed to the second sentence, request for students to begin in-person learning is in-person services is how that should read. So if it's approved, that's the strike that would be adjusted. Thank you. That's what it's meant to say.
Okay. Yeah, that's why it was more confusing for me and I was like thinking.
I appreciate that. Yeah.
Mr. Bishi, please go ahead.
Just two, again, points of clarification. This is only through June of 2021, right? This is only for this school year.
Let us hope. Yes.
Yeah, God, well, as written, it's only through June of 2021.
Yes, any, any change, any, these are emergency policies related to the current executive order that says this school year, we have to offer a full-distance option. So anything beyond that would.
I know we're only two months into it, but has this, have, have we ever hit this constraint, Dr. Mingle? Like, have we ever not been able to accommodate changes based on resources at this, with only two months under our belt?
Not yet. We do get requests to change regularly. We're making changes in some places. Several times a week. And we get requests from people who make a change and then the next week asked to reverse the change and then the next week asked to reverse it back. That's why we, this language is here. Um, so we haven't had to do it yet, but it came up with hybrid one point one, because as we discussed, most of the flexibility we had. To easily go back and forth went away because now we have dedicated distance and dedicated in-person teachers in classrooms. It's much easier in grades three through eight because it's the same homeroom, whether you're in person or you're. At home. So we haven't hit a limit yet. We've made changes even in K two in the last two weeks since we implemented a new, um, system.
And then one final question, this, this is wording, uh, from Trenton or from. The service. This is not tailored to our district yet, right?
So the, the tailored part is the phrasing of a new phase of the return to school process. The language from the state, from S E A, from Strass Esme. Just says beginning of the school year, beginning of a marking period. They just have those kind of like school year things. We made it actually less restricted by putting in at the beginning of a new phase.
I, oh, so the, the discussion we had about wording that, um, Mr. Ambercard just mentioned, that's our wording, not state wording.
Beginning of new phase is our wording, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I see no other. Comment. Was that Mrs. Song, could you please?
Certainly. Motion to approve item for board consideration, section twelve D. Policy number P one six four eight point O two. Is there a second?
Assuming the. D two.
Yes.
And I will second that, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Franco. Ms. Ambercar.
Uh, yes, assuming that it's being changed from full-time. Uh, the, in.
Yes, the language changes being fixed. Mr. Bellish.
Oh.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Brizzy.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes, yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Unfinished business. I see no unfinished business. Does any board member have unfinished business? Give it another five seconds. Seeing none, moving on to agenda item fourteen, new business. We have the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school calendar. Dr. Mingle, do you wanna?
Yes. So for the members of the public who are on the call, uh, we did post a link on the main page of the district website to the draft calendar. This would be on the next agenda on November sixteenth for board approval. So there's no action tonight. It's just to make everybody aware that. The draft calendar is available on the website. It matches the Watchung Hills Regional High School, school calendar, which was adopted. Back in March, actually. Um. It's, it's essentially the same as this year is what had been if we had started everything as normal.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Any comment from, uh, board member about the calendar for the next year? Mr. Franco, please go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, just, just keeping consistent with what we've talked about in the last couple of years. I mean, ending school on Monday, June twentieth. Kind of, I don't understand the logic for that and, and just looking through the calendar. Why spring break starts on the Friday, the fifteenth? Cause if you don't start Friday fifteenth, then you end on Friday in June. It is, I don't, so maybe you could, the spring recess wise is starting that Friday.
I believe that's.
You can explain. There's gotta be a day somewhere we can pull back. So it's, we're not doing a half a day of school on Monday, the twentieth.
So the, the one issue. Sorry. The, the one thing that pops up, which makes our calendar go a day longer is by contract, we have to have a certain number of snow days. And it's one day more than all the other Watchon Hills districts. So as a result, when we agree on a calendar across the districts, we wind up with an extra day at the end. Um. We don't typically use it because it only comes into play if we use every one of our snow days, but I, I totally hear you. None of us wants the last day. It's going to be on a Monday.
Mrs. Song, please.
Yeah, just of note that April fifteenth, that Friday, as Dr. Mingle mentions is Good Friday. It's also the first day of Passover. So.
Any other? Seeing none, coming to the second item indoor facility use. All board members received, um, letter. Uh, about which Dr. Mingle informed the public. We have been asked if some of the teams can use the facilities. This was discussed in our back-to-school committee and the committee has, um, their opinion in the notes of the committee meeting. But for, um, public discussion, does anybody want to start providing their opinion about, um, indoor facility use requests from the public to our school district? Mr. Bishi, Mr. Brizzy, Mrs. Song.
I, uh, just a learning thing for me. Do we actually sign agreements with, or any? Do we set forth the understanding with the? Entities that use our buildings about who's responsible for what? Do we have any kind of? Paper, letter agreement? And if we do, I'd be interested in knowing now. If we'd have to modify that for COVID and set forth who's doing the testing and what, you know, what, all those, um, understandings between. Our school district and this, um, the basketball association.
Mr. Bellman, Mrs. Lenhart might be better able to respond to that.
So yes, in a traditional environment, yes, there are normal rules and regulations which the organizations have to sign off at the beginning of the year. Their season when they put in their list of dates that they want to use. Obviously, we have not had any facility interior usage since the beginning of COVID. So something would have to be created which hasn't existed yet in the past.
Right. And, and will we have anything to even go on? Like, do, do we have? Has any other district or has anybody come up with? Like a letter, Ms. Lenhart, like, I don't even know, would be, we'd be drafting it from the get-go? Would we need legal counsel to help us with that? This is all a bit unknown, I understand for everybody. So I don't even know.
So many districts are not allowing interior facility usage. I'm sure you can find some that are, but generally speaking, they're night, they're not. Um, it would be the recommendation, I believe, of administration that we involve legal counsel.
Right, right. Thank you.
So Brizzy, please.
I had, um, a couple, maybe clarification questions. I'm trying to wrap my head around this a little bit better. So my understanding is currently our, I'll, I'll use our middle school age kids. Our middle school age does not have winter sports that would include basketball. Is that a fair? Is, is that due to, I, I, I see heads nodding north, south. So I assume that's true. Is that due to, um? Our, our, is a board decision or is that coming down from, but that the, what is the, the, the road back plan, the, the document from the state? Do we know what? I'm focusing specifically on our sports. My, and where I'm going with this, uh, to be transparent is. My preference is if we have gymnasiums, they should be used first for our students. I want to, I want to understand that we're not. Saying no to our own students. You can't do this. And saying yes to, or, or considering, I shouldn't say saying yes, considering, um, outside. Access.
Yeah, so it's accurate that we don't currently have sports running from Warren Township Schools, including this winter. There's a couple of reasons for that. One, uh, it would require, so although I know that kids mix in cohorts outside of our school facilities. They don't mix in our facilities with our return to school plan. Uh, we, physical distancing requirements. And when we survey the other middle schools that we play in our league, they're not offering their middle school basketball teams. And then when you add on to that, in order to play schools, another, in other school, in order to play teams from other schools, we would then have to run busing that creates a new transportation. Furtile. None of it impossible. We know that many high schools are running sports, but that is not the plan in the middle schools in our area, at least not the ones that are in our conference.
So, don't, don't let me, uh, misinterpret. It sounded like a little. A, a piece of that reasoning was for our own schools. Safety for not having winter sports is what I thought I heard. And if I, if I'm off base, feel free. It, a, a question I had related to that, very hypothetical situation. Um, again, this has just helped me understand this. If the, if there was a, a game on a Friday night in, uh, you know, one of the gymnasiums, which there are in the winter, um, so. It happens, um. Sunday night, we find out. There was a case there. Our schools closed on Monday.
That depends. So there were, there's actually some schools in our region that were closed today for contact tracing. You might have seen some of these articles. Um, when a case comes in late on a Sunday, there's not off, there may not be enough time to figure out who you have to exclude. So some schools have taken to closing for a day just to be able to answer that question. So you don't have to be closed the next day. Um, but if you can't do all the steps you have to do on Sunday night, then that's where it's coming to play.
I just randomly picked those days. I wasn't using it for an example.
Oh, and actually, yeah, it just happened just as we can.
Okay. All right. Uh, that was coincidence. Okay. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Bell.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Song, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um. I was, uh, I was the one who asked it, this be put onto new business. Um, reading the request from the Youth Basketball Association. I took note of the, um. Way in which it appeared to me that they're really taking very seriously. The requirements for, um, protection under COVID, the, um, exclusion of spectators and parents, the. Fact that they have a, um, member of their board who's a certified as a contact tracer. Um, and so I, I was. Struggling with what I think we is, is a reality that, um, students come into our schools when they are not here in school. They are doing other things. And, um, as I greatly appreciate that the, the efforts being made by the community to restrict who they see at holidays, et cetera. Um, the, the largest risk I feel of. Transmission within the schools are, is, is what comes in from outside activities. So I was very encouraged. To see an outside activity that is part of our community. That has been enjoyed by so many Warren, um, students. Um, seek to do something that, that maintains access for basketball for, for youth in such a safe way. So understanding that our primary concern has to be that we keep our schools open and that we, um, don't overburden our administration with having to take one more thing on. Understanding all of that, I, I didn't want to be too quick. To reject the possibility that this might be something that we can accommodate and that we could, um. Partner, if you will, with some of the outside activities that provide opportunities. For safe interaction by our young people, by our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Sun. Um, I will go ahead, Mr. Franco, and then afterwards, um, I. Will ask you to provide feedback. Um, yes, I'm. Despite of being the president of the Board of Education, I'm also the cap master of local scout unit here in town. And we would also be interested in using the facilities, but we have seen that it will be very, very difficult to use them in a safe way. And I have to say, keeping the schools open was more important than allowing other. Um, organizations in our schools. If we open it up to one organization, we have to open it up for everybody that requests it and then can provide. The COVID protocol with which we have to come up that we request from these organizations. I don't think we can just allow it one organization. Every organization that follows, adheres to our standards that we ask for would have to be allowed. I think that could open the door for a lot of problems. And would potentially impact us in our operations so that we have to shut our schools potentially earlier. That's a risk where I'm very concerned about. Mr. Franco. Let's go ahead with your comment.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I agree with the sentiment that Mrs. Zone has put forth, but I also agree with Mr. Bellman's comment. That it's just, it's too risky. You know, this, the administration already has enough to deal with. Uh, and I think it's just too soon. I mean, our priority has to be to keep the schools open for the students and. If anything we do jeopardizes even a day of that, I think is too much. So I would be against this. I think it's just too soon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Franco. I, I see no other motion by a comment. Mr. Bishi, please go ahead.
Just one, I, I think in their letter, they said that they would consider Saturdays only if. Uh, but you do bring up a good point, Mr. Bellman, about you can't do it for one, but not the other. I just feel like, uh, if. Our students are anything like me, I'm going stir crazy about not getting out and it would be great if you could do it outdoors, but it's gonna be in the middle of the winter. And I just don't know that we have the bandwidth to put, draw a box around what our. Uh, requirements would be, but if we said we would open up the middle school, one gymnasium or one all-purpose room for Saturdays. I would be, I would be open to allowing, uh. You know, the Basketball Association to do this. As long as we drew a box and got a little bit of input from the, um, from our legal department. Seems like a lot of the risk, the, the worst risk is. You're playing basketball for crying out loud and every day is a new, new story about the latest sports figure. I mean. You're in contact. It's, it's even worse than the Cub Scouts. But, um, I just have sympathy for, for socialization here. That sets it.
Mrs. Ambercar and then Mrs. Song, please.
Uh, I agree with Patricia and I actually feel like I also read a lot about this, uh. The Youth Basketball Association, the steps they're taking and their drive to, uh, let the children play. And, uh, they are taking enough precautions, but the other point which was raised. Which mentioned that maybe girls scout, Cub Scout, they do want to share the, come and use the facility. So. In my opinion, this is a good way to begin with, but I don't know if we can open it for everybody else. So that's something which you would consider, but I would definitely be in favor of, uh. The Basketball Association trying to use the gymnasium.
Mrs. Song.
Yeah, I mean, this is hard, right? Um, this is really hard. And, and I, it's, I think it's very natural for, for everybody to kind of fall at different places on the risk spectrum. Um, I'm, I am mindful, and one of the things that, that. Runs through my head when I'm thinking about this is that saying no to. Uh, the basketball or some other organization to the extent that they can be accommodated, to the extent that we have the space and. You know, go through the hard work of, of figuring that out is if this isn't available in a safe way here, those. Children are still going to be doing something and very likely participating in activities that. Um. Maybe do not have this level of protocol and this degree of safety. Um, certainly would want to encourage and support our local recreation teams that are going to this effort. Um, their, their players are Warren kids for the most part and, um. They're a part of our community. I don't really think that saying that there are circumstances under which we would consider one person means that. The door then opens to a floodgate. I think that. The nature of the activity is important. For instance, this basketball is a essentially non-contact sport. It's, um. You know, there are, I could conceive of other activities that could not be as safely done and perhaps those we would be more cautious about. So. I, I, I get it, but I, um. Yeah, I, on balance with, with my risk assessment, I lean towards seeing if this is something we can do.
Uh, first, Mr. Franco and then Mrs. Taylor, please.
So just quickly, I would love for the kids to come back and play. I mean, absolutely. I have no real issue with that. To your comment about, well, basketball is very much a contact sport. Um, but, uh. The, the issue with me is not necessarily safety. As most of you know. Uh, you know, I'm not, I'm not hiding in my basement these days, right? The issue for me is that if something happens over the weekend and we have to close or go for full virtual. On a day of school where the kids are supposed to be in the building because we've allowed other groups to come in, that to me is the big risk. And, and it's, it, it, that's not a phone call I want to get or, or most of parents want to get, hey, I know your kid's supposed to be in school today, but. We've got to close because the basketball teams were here this weekend and there was a case and we can't contract trace and. And we don't know who's exposed and it's gonna take us a day. So you're virtual. That's to me the big risk. And, and given everything that we've heard from parents. On multiple calls about wanting their kids back in school. To introduce a factor that could potentially take the kids back out of school, even for a day, doesn't make any sense to me. So from my perspective, that's, that's where I'm coming from. I would love for the kids to come back and play ball. I think it's great. I, I, I support it a hundred percent, just not now. It's not the right time. I think it's great. I support it 100%, just not now. It's not the right time.
Thank you very much. Ms. Taylor, please go ahead.
I was just gonna, you know, say something, a version of what Mr. Franco just said is that the decisions that we've had to make have been really difficult and that we all would love to just say yes to, to everything, but we have to prioritize and that, you know, what he said about resource allocation, I thought that was a really good way to put the struggle that we have. We have limited resources and we want to do everything for everybody and we just can't. And so we have to make these difficult decisions, but I, I just wanted to reiterate that I agree with Mr. Franco and you, Mr. Bellman, and your sentiments.
Mrs. Song, please go ahead.
Then it just.
Afterwards, Mr. Bishi.
I'm gonna make one last pitch, one last argument and put one last thought out there. That phone call that a parent gets that says the school is going to close, I got that call. I had my high schoolers home for two weeks while the school was on full remote. And that was because students who engaged in an activity outside of school became infected, tested positive, and they were of multiple grade levels and crossed cohorts. So we had to shut the school down entirely for two weeks. Bridgewater-Raritan High School is currently out for two weeks. I don't know their circumstances, but I can tell you the circumstance of the school that my children attend. They have sports teams. They have basketball teams, they have football team, they have soccer teams. And this, none of these infections traced to any school activity at all or any use of our facilities. It was 100% outside of the school environment and the school facilities and the school teams. And so that's something we need to take into consideration is that children are engaging in these activities to have the option to support an activity that is making efforts to follow protocols gives me a level of comfort that I lack with some of the other activities that students engage in that I just don't have any idea what level of exposure they're bringing into the schools. So I get it, but I just wanted to throw out that perspective. Thanks.
Mrs., Mr. Bishi, Mrs. Amber Carr, and then me, please.
This is going to be tough for me to articulate, but as, and I'm a doctor, but I think that it dissipates in the air if it's aerosolized, the virus. Certainly, if, it would dissipate on Sunday if we only allowed the building to be used on Saturday. So in our role as stewards of the building itself, there's no way that we would be responsible for closing the schools on Monday 48 hours after our building was used on a Saturday. It's not just going to linger in the air all of Sunday and infect somebody on Monday. The second order magnitude, I think, is what Ms. Song said is if somehow by us allowing this to happen, the kids did get together for a basketball game and they got into contact, then I guess we're allowing it to happen because we provided them the opportunity to get together and play the basketball game. So maybe by allowing, by fostering it, by allowing it to play basketball, but if they're going to play basketball anyway or get together anyway, that's what's going to cause the infection and the schools to close on Monday. It's not us just as response, as being the gymnasium owner. It's just that we're allowing them to get together. Mr. Rock, go ahead. Those are my thoughts. I know Mr. Franco has a thought, but I think we got a few going.
Thank you, Mr. Bishi. Mrs. Amber Carr, then you, then Mr. Franco.
And that was a good point by Mr. Bishi. My only last point out here is that we all know that the kids are out there playing. At least this way we are able to facilitate something which is safer for the kids and they are under supervision because the people, kids who play basketball are going to be playing basketball either ways, whether in school, out of school, wherever they find the avenue. So if we don't help them out, we might get more infection from the other route because they'll be playing on Friday, Saturday, wherever they can play and whatever they can do. So.
Thank you. I also want to look at the logistical implications from that. Number one, we have to clean. If it's Friday evening, yes, that would open up on Monday. But are we allowing other users of our facilities every weeknight potentially? I don't think that we are just talking about basketball. I think we are talking about wide usage of our facilities. We have over the winter, the soccer teams, as I mentioned, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts and other groups that use our facilities in normal years. Additional cleaning, as we are stretched out, do we now have to provide that? Legal, if any infection would happen on our property, are we on the hook? Is there any chance that we could be put into a position where we don't want to be? Those were my thoughts. And Mrs. Song, you mentioned that so far school sports have not caused any or sports in school facilities have not caused any infections. Yes, they were all outside. Outside, it is significantly safer. I don't think that we have so much experience yet about indoor usage of facilities. That's why I'm hesitant about that. Mr. Franco, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to clarify one thing. I mean, yes, if you facilitate the kids, you know where they are. I think it's a bit of a weak argument that if they don't play in your gym, they're going to play somewhere else. Yeah, that's going to happen, but the difference is if they play somewhere else and they get sick, they stay home. And the people that they contract traced or they were with will be traced and those kids will be quarantined as well. Or at worst, the class will be quarantined. If it happens in our building, you have to close the building. So you're going to potentially put at risk kids coming to school, the, all of our kids in that building, whatever happens, for a minority of students that actually play basketball. And I just don't, I just don't understand why we would take that risk at this, at this moment, why we would take that risk. It just doesn't make any sense to me.
Mr. Bishi, please go ahead.
Mr. Franco, I just, that's not what I under, if somebody got sick on Saturday from a basketball game, I didn't understand it to mean that we would have to close the school on Monday. I thought we would, here we go, maybe this is the problem.
Right? That's the thing. We don't know. It's potentially, we might have to.
Well, I don't know how long we're going to talk about it, but it might make sense to have, I might ask Dr. Mingle or Ms. Lenhart to reach out to the County Department of Health and ask what would happen, or you may know the answer, I don't know, what would happen if somebody got sick at a event in our school on a Saturday, would we have to close the schools on Monday? Or we may already have an answer because I see a hand up.
Mrs. Song, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not a doctor either. I have a little experience of this, older school kids, kid in college, et cetera. The, what we're talking about isn't they get sick at the game, it's that they become exposed and they contract the virus. We wouldn't, you wouldn't know that, like, using a hypothetical, Saturday you have a game. You're not going to know by Monday whether or not you've contracted the virus. And so it's very likely that, and this is what's happening to the extent that you're seeing, you know, people out there coming into the school system, they, you know, test positive. At the time they test positive, they've contracted the, the virus four, five days before that. Whether or not they were capable of transmitting it is another thing, but they contracted it long before that. And, you know, I can tell you with our school, we were, you know, you get advised by the Department of Health that you have a positive in your student body and they trace back from there how far back for contact tracing. They don't trace forward, they go back. They say, we've got a positive case. What were you doing the last five days? Who were you in contact with? And that's where you end up with a problem if you had a kid that was on, you know, transportation on a bus, crossing grade levels, crossing cohorts. That's where you run into the risk of, you know, taking a whole class out or a whole, you know, potentially school. So that's how I understand, and we probably have doctors out there that are going, Mrs. Song is not being completely entirely right about this. But it's, I don't think it's as simple as you had a game Saturday and you know by Monday that you can't go to school. So the very real possibility is that you would go to school, you wouldn't know whether or not you're contagious yet.
We're going to vote on this or is this some?
There is no motion. This is purely discussion at this point.
Do you want me to summarize where we are? Just, just so everybody who's not on the ad hoc committee knows. So the operation subcommittee of return to school, that's the district people, subcommittees, was looking into, you know, our current return to school plan says no facility usage indoors until at least January 1st. So it has to be adjusted one way or the other to either extend that or to allow usage. When the governor issued guidance allowing winter sports to happen, that generated interest obviously in the community, of course, about, okay, so now can we make this work? And so as we were having this exact same kind of discussion in all of our committees of the pros and cons and all the different things, and we were trying to draw that box, I think the way Mr. Bishi described it, around like, what are the parameters under which we would say yes? That's what we brought to the, the ad hoc committee saying we haven't gone to Z because we haven't gone to the attorneys and we haven't done all that, but is it even a concept that the board wants to be open to? And the consensus at the committee level was no, it's not a risk for right now, which is, so that work hasn't occurred. So if there was going to be action, it would need to be to direct us to come up with a proposal of some sort to bring back through that process because we stopped that work.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Mrs. Song, please go ahead.
What capacity does the administration have to undertake that work? I mean, if, if we were even to put it to the board right now where we asked, you know, is, if I put a motion out there to request that the administration continue with that effort, we've got a, you've got a lot on your plate. So be candid. Is that something you even have capacity for right now?
No, I appreciate that. I, we have capacity to have a proposal. I think we had a lot of conversations, whether it was, you know, there are questions that we would have to answer around, is it only when the health conditions are at a certain color? Are we passing on costs for things like custodial overtime that wouldn't be necessary to the organizations that use it? Are we limiting to certain organizations, certain days, certain times? There was a recommendation in the early drafting of saying that any organization that uses it has to use our cohorts. So like teams would have to be only kids in our third grade cohort A playing against our third grade cohort. There's a lot of, there's a lot, the box, how tight we make the box is a really big set of decisions. So yes, that is something that we could do. It would necessarily have these kinds of conversations to follow up to decide whether people are comfortable with it, though.
Mrs. Song, please go ahead.
I'd like then to make a motion requesting that the ad hoc return to school committee continue its evaluation with the, you know, with the administration, continue its evaluation under what parameters would we allow the indoor usage of our facilities? And a request that the committee then report back.
Second.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Mark, Mr. Bishi.
Language is important, Mrs. Song, so I want to make sure that I get this correct. The Board of Education hereby requests, hereby request that the ad hoc return to school committee continue its investigation regarding interior facility usage and return with a recommendation?
Sure.
And Mr. Bishi seconded.
Yes.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Ms. Amber Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Bellish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Brazee?
Stay in.
Mr. Franco?
No.
Mrs. Taylor?
Stay.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman?
No.
I don't think it passed because it only has four yeses. But I would like to make sure that it's four out of eight, not four out of six.
Do you want to take a pause to look it up or is that something we should follow up on?
We're going to go into exact rights. We might have an answer if I could just wait, rather than have everybody wait for me. Thank you.
We know what the vote was. We know it's 4-2-2, so.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any other new business item? I was not made aware of any, but if any board member wants to bring up a new business item, please raise your hand, use the raise hand feature. I see none, but I will give it another five seconds. I'll close that topic and move on to item 15, public commentary on any topic. It's the same rules that we had before. There are three minutes for every participant. Please state your name and address and we'll limit that section to 15 minutes, after which the board can extend it if needed. Please use the raise your hand feature within Zoom. It's at the bottom. There is a button for participants. Once you click on that, it opens up a separate window and there's a blue raise your hand feature. And with that, Mr. Todd Weinstein, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening. First, thank you to the, the board for everything you're doing. Dr. Mingle, you as well. I know it's a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of energy. I have two questions. One is for hybrid 1.2, have you met to discuss that? If so, what is the outcome and what is the plan? What is the timeline? Second question would be, last board meeting, we brought up if there's been any discussions and or progress towards getting learning disability kids, IEP children, et cetera, back into school. Dr. Mingle, I think you had said that you were meeting with Mr. Ressa. I'm curious to understand the outcome of the meeting and if there's any timing and next steps associated with that. And I forgot to give my address, 16 Nottingham Way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see Ms. Stacy second. Please go ahead.
I have to figure my video. Hold on. We did this last time. Okay.
Perfect.
Okay. Hi, Stacy Sackett, Seven Trinity Place. I'm sort of have a similar question. Now that we have a plan in place for the K2 students, I'm wondering, is there any talk of possibly merging the, merging the homerooms for cohorts A and B to get the upper level students into, into the buildings on more days during the week? More, you know, more, more afternoons a week. And then we're almost two months into, into the school year and I'm wondering, will we be seeing a shift from, it seems like the kids are still getting a lot of pre-recorded lessons while they're in person in the building, in the classrooms? Will we start seeing a shift to more live, real-time instruction now that we're going, you know, into almost eight weeks of being in school? So I'm wondering if that's going to be kind of coming up soon. That's it.
Thank you very much. As was all the public commentary sections, administration will answer those questions in bulk after our public commentary section. Moving on to Mr. and Mrs. Gillenwater.
Hello. My name is Vance Gillenwater. I'm the president of the Warren Youth Basketball Association. I want to thank the board for taking on my, my letter and my request to use the gyms. Obviously, we're very, very passionate about the kids getting, getting out there and of course staying safe. And, you know, like my letter said, I guess in our mind, the kids are going to go out and play basketball in some venue and we believe that under the guidance of the, you know, Warren school board and the fact that we have a great track record with keeping the kids safe, that together we could, you know, open the gyms on Saturdays necessary and, you know, you know, keep the cohorts in A and B, you know, together so the kids don't co-mingle. We could do that, too. I guess I'm just here offering my support for the, the idea that we open up the gyms to the kids. I think it's important the kids to get out there and play. They're out there playing anyway. I can tell you that for sure. I just think this would be the safest way to do it and our reg program, which is almost, you know, all Warren kids in the, in the school system, you know, grades three, three through eight, be the only ones even in the gyms. Though we could even keep it just Warren kids only. So anyway, I'm just here to put that out there and thank everyone in the board for taking the time to listen to our requests and we understand that you guys have a tough job and appreciate the decision-making. And thanks for, thanks for having me on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gillenwater. Could I please ask you to name your address?
Yes, 30 Gregory Lane, Warren.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Olson, could you please go ahead?
Hi there. Good evening. I'm Amy Olson. I'm 49 Mitchell Avenue. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight and thank you to the staff at the school that I know, Woodland School and Dr. Mingle for all their hard work. I am a public school teacher. And Dr. Mingle for all their hard work. I am a public school teacher. So I am juggling the same heaviness that you all are, and I applaud you for what you're doing. I would like to bring up. Again. Specials, what's going on with specials? So in Woodland School, last week, there was an email blast that went out. Asking parents to check to see that their students are participating in and completing assignments. And I know just, you know, in parent circles, it's definitely something that's come up that's a bit of a concern. Last time we, I brought up my concerns. Dr. Mingle was very kind in responding with his admiration for the arts and exposure, and I think that's great. And. The idea that this. This whole year twenty twenty is a living, breathing document, right? Everything's changing. All the parts are moving. But. Would it be good at this point to reevaluate the way that specials are are directed in Warren Township? I know because I work in a school district, I have live face-to-face instruction or Zoom instruction with my students. I see my all virtual and my hybrid students. I have thirty minute classes. I have a five day rotation at one school and a six day rotation at the other. And my thirty minutes are built into a half day schedule. So that still allows teachers their preps. It allows me face-to-face time, whether it's in a virtual setting, of course, or in a in a physical setting. So I'm hoping that specials can be reevaluated. I know from the student end. It becomes a chore and. Parents that are sitting there lighting a fire under their students to say, hey, come on, you gotta do your Spanish. You gotta do this. You gotta do that. The pre-recorded videos are, they're not engaging our students. And their hard work for those teachers, but if their hard work is falling on deaf ears, it's frustrating for teachers. For those who want to carry out a curriculum. And for the administrators who are looking to see that their teachers are effective because when it's asynchronous, we are seeing now as a result of the. Please of teachers. And of families, if I may say so, that the asynchronous specials aren't quite working. But this is only November, and I think there's a lot of time to. Reexamine how specials can be integrated into a half day schedule. I just hope we get an opportunity. That, you know, we're all acting, then we're looking at it, and then we're reflecting on it, and we're kind of hoping to grow. But to Mr. There was a gentleman who spoke earlier about the pre-recorded lessons. Perhaps it was Mrs. Sackett.
We will not use names in our public.
I'm sorry, these are the two other commentators. My apologies. There were two other comments that were brought up. With pre-recorded lessons. That kind of ties in a little bit with specials. It also ties in with. The calculated risk that parents take when sending their children into school. We take that risk because we want our children to have that face-to-face interaction. I asked my child, children special. Homeroom teacher on back to school night. If they were in front of a screen, to which I was surprised to hear that they are. They're watching the same pre-recorded lessons that their peers at home are. But it's, it's still not the same thing. So I know that I can see a finger up and my time's almost up, but. Thank you for listening. I hope to see something reflect with specials because I know the students need it and the parents want it and the teachers want it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your feedback. Any other participant? Right now I see none, but I will give it another twenty seconds, fifteen seconds. If you want to participate, please just click on participant at the bottom and use the raise your hand feature of Zoom. Otherwise, I will close the section of public commentary with. Mrs. Leonard was administration and Dr. Mingle, Mrs. Leonard and providing answers to these questions. Or, Miss Leonard, do you want to participate as? Thank you very much. Then I'll hand it over to Dr. Mingle, who might pass it on to you.
So I just wanted to provide an answer to the vote, and I'm sorry, it's not anything I've ever all worked with before. Because it is not a personnel item, it's considered four out of six and passes. If it was a personnel item. The vote response would be different.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Leonard. Mr. Mr. Brizzi, is that directly to the comment by Mrs. Leonard?
I was under the, it is, I was under the impression that it would require through Robert's rules, that would be a majority would be required. And since four out of eight is not majority, it's Robert's rules is fifty percent plus one. My interpretation may be incorrect, but I was surprised to hear that.
So clearly, I struggled with it a little bit. I did call somebody. So I think it's a, I did also try to get a hold of Magic Kobe, but he has been non-responsive. So I think we all agree to count. At this point, it looks like it.
Yeah, no.
But I am certainly open to being corrected when I get a hold of an attorney.
As am I, for clarity, as am I.
We'll figure that out until the next committee meeting, and then we'll make sure that we adhere to the board's wishes. And with that, I want to open up for administration to provide some answer of the questions.
Sure. So. Let me say this first, while we have the maximum number of people on the call. There is a stakeholder survey that went live last Thursday. And if you haven't taken it yet, we left it live until Tuesday this week purposely because there was a board meeting tonight, and I would be able to remind you to take it. So. If you haven't taken the survey, it was in last Thursday's community briefing and stat email. We added several questions that directly get at the public commentary topics, which is why I want to make sure you take it. Specifically, we asked our students and our parents to give us feedback about the specials experience. And there are questions for students, parents, and staff members about the balance of asynchronous versus synchronous, live versus recorded. And which ones and how engaging they are. So we are looking for that feedback because as several people have commented on, our goal is to make. Our programs better each day we go by. We're two months in, so. You know, text your friends if they haven't participated. There's still time to do that. I know it's late, but there's still time to do that tonight before tomorrow morning when we start the analysis. And as always, this is a short week, so it's gonna be, we might not be able to get it all done in before the community briefing, which would go on Wednesday this week. But as always, we will publish the survey results, so everybody sees the results that we received. With that, that. Hopefully gets at some of that question because we do want the feedback. And the other thing we did to the survey this month that we haven't done before. Is at the end of each of those big sections, we added a place for open comments. Which are very time consuming, as you can imagine, for analysis, but will allow us to get better color when people say. I feel this way, but it's only because I think this would be a better way to do it or whatever information people want to share. We have been discussing what would come next as far as a hybrid one point two. We started, we've been discussing that within our committees. We also brought it to the ad hoc committee of our initial thinking. That will address the most vulnerable student populations, including. At least some students with IEPs. We're looking at students who receive English as a second language services. But we're not at a place where we have a recommendation yet. There will be more information. To come. One of the challenges for us, and there's a lot of chatter among superintendents about this. Is, as you know, and I've talked about, we've moved from green to yellow. And our neighbors in Union County are on the brink of going to orange, which is start. If that happens, the guidance changes as far as things like cohort mixing and opening up schools and. And all that. So we're going slowly while we are in an increasing risk environment. So we are looking, though, at the at the most vulnerable populations. We are not currently talking about afternoons. We're talking about within the single session day, but that is definitely something you'll hear about at the next. Certainly, the next two board meetings that we have remaining in twenty twenty. So that kind of goes to the pre-recorded real time shift. That data will be very helpful to us because we hear anecdotally, people say. They do or don't like a certain thing. We're trying to get higher quantities of feedback because sometimes. What we hear doesn't match. Once we, you know, once we have two or three hundred responses. It may not be what we hear from one or two. So we're trying to make sure we get enough participation to make good decisions about that. There are some limitations. In situations where a teacher is responsible for both in person at home at the same time, of course. I think I addressed the questions, actually. So yes, we are looking into what comes next, what hybrid one point two will look like. We're also. For anybody on the call who might, this might affect a small population, we're looking at our preschool program and what we can do there as well. So more to come at the next meeting.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. With that, I will close agenda item fifteen. But before we go into executive session. I want to preface it. Yes, there is a sentence, action may be taken upon return to public session. We will not have a discussion in public. There could be a motion that would be voted on. So for those that wanna stay on the call. You're welcome to stay on the call, but for the majority of participants, I could imagine. That the rest of the meeting would not be of interest. So you can also drop off. That is fine. But please, if you wanna remain on the meeting and wanna get, see if there was even a result of this executive session. You are welcome. You will be brought into the waiting room and upon return to the public meeting, you will be brought back.
Now, just take me a minute to move everybody. Once, once we have a vote and. To go into executive, it'll take me a minute just to.
Could you please? Mrs. Sa, are you still on the call?
I have rejoined. What did I miss? Are you ready for me to move something?
For the executive session to move us into executive session.
My apologies for my. Internet. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA ten four dash eleven. Permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss. A collective bargaining agreement and or negotiations related to it. Action may be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately fifteen minutes. And be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second, Ben.
Gentlemen. Board members only. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The board will now go into executive session.
Thank you. I see that twenty people of the public have joined us. Thank you for waiting. Mrs. Sa, could you please move us out of? Executive session.
Motion to leave executive session reopen or re-enter open session.
Second, Ben.
Okay.
Board members only. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The board is now in open. I would like to report to the board that I have been collaborating with the board attorney who needs a little bit more time to investigate the matter.
Thank you.
On the vote, on the four two two vote.
And just as a background for Mrs. Sa and the public, Mrs. Sa. I had technical difficulties and left the call. The motion where we voted, I think it was for.
Four two two.
Four two two, we had. We are not sure yet if that motion passed or did not pass. If it has to be more than fifty people, fifty percent of the people present. Or just fifty percent of the votes versus snowballs. So we'll seek legal guidance to make sure that the committee acts. The interest of the vote of our board. With that, I, Mrs. Sa, could you please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Ben.
All board members only. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? The morning board meeting is now over. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Bye bye.